Intro started, standby for countdown. Thirty away. All right, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, welcome to the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Board of Cedric County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. To kick off today's meeting Commissioners, I'd like to first talk about the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, which kicked off Monday, the annual event now in its twenty-seventh year, is a friendly competition between law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS from the city of Wichita and Cedric County to see who can recruit the most blood and platelet donors. The campaign has collected over three hundred thousand donations over the twenty-seven years. Last year firefighters won the competition, but other departments are eager to take that top spot this year. I'd like to welcome Shannon Wedge from the American Red Cross along with Battle Committee members to give you a preview of this year's event, and at the end of her presentation, everyone has to go outside and get their blood drawn today. Just a joke Commissioners. Shannon.
That's a good idea, I like that. We'll just pull the blood mobile up next year.
Okay. Well, thank you Commissioners Lopez and Cruz. I apologize, I'm losing my voice. Thank you for coming to our kickoff this week too. So, I'm Shannon Wedge, I'm the Executive Director for the South Central Southeast Kansas Chapter of the American Red Cross. We're here today to kick off our twentieth seventh annual Wichita Cedric County Battle of the Badges Community Blood Drive. This yearly event helps the Red Cross collect blood during the busy holiday season. This is a time when donors get busy with their plans and often forget to go make that life-saving blood donation. And on top of that, we continue to face challenges from the ongoing pandemic, so this community blood drive is vital to patients in need. Through the first twenty-six years of the event, we've collected more than thirty thousand blood and platelet donations. What an amazing accomplishment. The goal for this year's event is one thousand sixty-three blood and platelet donations, and we're incredibly thankful for these agencies that come together to help us collect blood during this critical time. This year, the Battle of the Badges runs December thirteenth through January second. You can donate at the Red Cross Blood Donation Center at seven oh seven North Main. And now I'd like to invite some of our first response agencies and our committee members to come up and talk about the battle.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Philip Thompson, I'm a Lieutenant with Cedric County EMS. Every two seconds, someone in the nation requires a blood product. That's a fairly staggering statistic. As first responders, we know firsthand what it is to go out there and see the people that are in need. We invite everyone at home to come out and donate blood. Your donation can save up to three lives. O positive blood is very critical in need right now, especially during the holiday season. It's the most crucial for hospitals because anyone is able to receive it as long as they're RH positive. So please invite your friends and family and come down to the Red Cross Blood Center and make an appointment and donate the gift of life this holiday season.
Good morning Commissioners, Robert Timmons of Cedric County Fire District One. The number one reason when people are asked why they do not donate blood during the holiday seasons is they simply get busy and haven't been asked. While we're asking, please take a little time out of your busy schedules, stop by the Red Cross, and give the gift of life.
Captain Tracy Sprower with the Cedric County Sheriff's Office, I'm going to ad lib a little bit, but the Christmas time is tough to get blood donations and with everybody's holiday season going and things that are going on, it's tough to get down there. I get that. But currently with the situation in the south and the east with the tornadoes and the disaster and the need for blood is significant now, and I think it's important to get out and donate blood. So please, if you have the opportunity, get down to the Red Cross and donate. Thank you.
Thank you for your time today. They did not plug that when you come in, you get a T-shirt and you can vote fire, law, or EMS. So please come in and vote and support our first responders as well. Thank you for your time today.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hey, I just wanted to mention really quickly, it's really easy to donate blood. It takes virtually no time. There's an app that you can sign up with your time, and I donated blood in three minutes and forty-eight seconds. So I literally filled the bag in less than five minutes, and I was in and out, and I felt great, and it's just really easy to do, and it doesn't take a lot of time. I just kind of wanted to plug that.
Yeah, exactly. And you can make your appointment at redcrossblood.org, you can call one eight hundred Red Cross. We do encourage appointments during the pandemic, so we don't have people waiting, and we can get you in and out, but exactly what you said is you can fill out that rapid pass, we do your health history, that's what takes the most time, and then you get there and you donate in under five minutes. So platelets are two hours, but then there's a great need for cancer patients. Half of our platelets go to cancer patients. But, exactly. So thank you for coming to donate, and I'm glad that, did you feel well after?
I felt fine.
Awesome. So, any other questions or comments?
I don't see any, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much Shannon and our first responders for joining us today. Transitioning Commissioners, Cedric County Health Department testing and vaccine closures you should be aware of can be found on the Cedric County website. We've got that pulled up for you here. At the top, you see this pink banner. It highlights the holiday hours, which says the testing site will be closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, so Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, December thirty-first and January first, New Year's Eve, and then New Year's Day. Let's see, to shorten wait times, bring proof of prior vaccination, and don't forget a quarter for the parking meter for the dates that you are going to have testing done. Commissioners, this is the last Board of County Commission meeting of the year. Commissioners will be back Tuesday, January fourth, at nine AM. Please continue to check the Cedric County website and social media pages, that's the Facebook and Twitter pages for Cedric County, for all of the latest up-to-date information on county business. Now taking a look at today's agenda, under appointments Commissioners, you will accept the appointment, the, excuse me, the resignation and then the appointment to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board. Under new business, you will hear a resolution providing for the alteration of county commissioner district boundaries within the county, a resolution of Cedric County, Kansas joining the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic. Item F is the Wine Nation Crosswinds Casino Service and Funding Agreement. You will receive an update on the COVID nineteen fiscal response, a consideration of a funding request of a hundred thousand dollars by PBS Kansas, and last but certainly not least, a report of the boards and bids of contracts from their regular meeting on December ninth, twenty twenty-one. With that Chairman, I wish everyone a very special holiday, and I'm happy to turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay, thank you Akeem. And with that, welcome everybody to the last meeting of the year, Wednesday, December fifteenth, Board of Cedric County Commissioners, and of course, I want to recognize staff and thank you for the Christmas decorations, and we will kick off this last meeting. Madam Clerk.
Incantation to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Before we go to the next item, just want to let everybody know, we're going to have an off-agenda item at the beginning of new business related to some housekeeping matter, and there may be another discussion about the current environment with testing that might be come under other. And lastly, just a note that there's a very important Zoom meeting from Secretary Lorenz from Kansas Department of Transportation, starts at eleven, that a few of us would like to be on if we meet the eleven o'clock deadline, but just kind of setting the agenda as going forward. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we did not receive any emails from the public agenda. Did we have anybody sign up today? And so there's nobody signed up to address us on the public agenda, so we will move forward with that. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Commissioners, you had a chance to review the regular meeting minutes of November seventeenth. Are there any additions, corrections, or comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November seventeenth commission meeting. Motion and a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, accept the resignation of Shane Gross from the Wichita Cedric County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. Item B is the resignation of Shane Gross from Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. This is Commissioner Cruz's appointment to this board. We'd ask that you accept her resignation.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Mr. Papun. I'd like to thank Shane for her service on this board. It's a very time-consuming board, and she has asked to resign, and so we will respect that. The application will be open starting today for those who are interested in applying for this position. This position will be open for two weeks, so please go ahead and apply for that. But as that is stated, I will make a motion to accept the resignation.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution reappointing Martha Sanchez to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. This is an appointment by Commissioner Cruz of the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board. This is a fifteen-member board that gives advice and input to county commissioners and com-care on programs and other issues relating to mental health. Each commissioner has one, three appointments to this board. Ms. Sanchez has been already a current member of the board, and this is a reappointment for four years. The resolution's in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Chairman. Martha has been a faithful advocate for mental health. I'm excited that she has agreed to serve another term, and I appreciate her willingness to serve. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution reappointing Martha Sanchez.
And I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, well, wait just a minute. Madam Clerk, I'd like to, as we approach into new business, make a motion for off-agenda item related to the certification of a voting delegate with the county commission. So I'm motion to do an off-agenda item related to that.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any questions? Don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Mike, Mr. Papun, you want to give some background?
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. The county's been approached by the Kansas Association of Counties about a special election coming up January fifth of next year, between two and three PM, it'll be a virtual vote, on an issue that involves whether or not to add this Kansas County Human Resource Association as an affiliate member to their board. Right now, they have eighteen board members by making, or by allowing this association to be an affiliate member, it would enlarge the board to nineteen members. I think you have the two documents before you. One is the certification of voting delegate. So today, we'll ask you to select a delegate to vote during that period of time on January fifth, and an alternate in case that person is unavailable. And this has to be submitted back to the Kansas Association of Counties no later than the end of business tomorrow. So that's the timeliness of this matter and why we're bringing it up off agenda.
Okay, thank you. And because of the deadline, we need to cover this. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, thank you Mr. Papun, appreciate it. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the voting delegate as our chairman and the alternate as our chairman pro tem.
Okay. Any other questions on that? We all received an email about this background. Again, it's just to add the HR association into the, so the motion is for the chair to be the delegate and the pro tem to be the first alternate. Any questions, comments? I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you everybody for allowing that off-agend item. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, a resolution providing for the alteration of Cedric County Commissioner District boundaries within Cedric County, Kansas.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Fessinger.
Good morning Commissioners, Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Before you today is a resolution that would redistrict the five Cedric County Board of County Commissioner districts into five new districts. As you know, approximately every ten years Cedric County engages in this process of redistricting. And as you know, and as I've said to you multiple times before, state law requires that each district be both as compact as possible and as equal in population as possible. In September of this year, our GIS department received the final results of the twenty twenty U.S. Census. At that point, and after giving you notice, that department produced eight viable redistricting options for your considerations, and these options were created under apolitical circumstances. Subsequently, Commissioners took it upon themselves to produce three additional options as well for the commission's consideration. In November of this year, this commission opted to create an ad hoc bipartisan redistricting committee to analyze the eleven options and to produce a recommendation, a non-binding recommendation for this commission. The committee met three times, and through its deliberations and analysis, the committee arrived at a unanimous recommendation for this commission. That recommendation is MAP six. In its report, the committee wrote that it chose MAP six because that map provides both the greatest population equivalency while also keeping communities of interest and neighborhoods together. Because of the committee's unanimous recommendation, your staff has prepared for you this morning a resolution that would implement MAP six, but please bear in mind that you can deviate from that if you wish. The recommendation from that committee was non-binding, and you can instruct staff to alter that resolution as you see fit. Your staff has no particular recommendation for you as to which map you would choose, but it is our recommendation that you pass a resolution this morning. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Okay. The Commissioners, the recommendation unanimous fifteen to zero vote from the committee that we appointed was to go with MAP six. Commissioner Dennis?
I thank you Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank the citizens. We have, and four hundred of us, all of the comments that came to us through the website. I want to thank all the citizens that attended our open house town hall meeting out at WSU. I sincerely want to thank the fifteen individuals that were appointed to review this process. I know the Commissioners have been involved every step of the way. It is the final decision of the Commissioners, but I do appreciate the time and effort that went into it from everyone. And so I'd make a motion that we adopt MAP six.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion and a second for adoption of MAP six. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. I see one of the committee members is actually in the audience. I don't know if you want to give him a chance to speak or not, but I do have some comments about the motion and some questions, so I wonder if you want to take that in.
Well, we can allow one of the committee members.
I'm not sure he wants to just throw that out there. He may or may not want to.
Because we also received a letter from one of the other members.
So, we did receive an email on Monday from our staff, and first of all, let me just say, I want to say thank you to the committee. I think they did a great job. I think it was a good process overall. I'm a little bit disappointed that the rest of the community didn't have the same opportunity. I think that this was one way to help solve this problem, it wasn't the only way, but one of the things we talked about from the very beginning was there's no such thing as a perfect map. There are actually competing ideas. When you focus on one area and try to fix, you know, one goal, you might actually mess up another one. In a sense, the district is a zero-sum game of options, and so when you fix one area, maybe mess up another area. So, at the end of the day, there was discussions about, for example, disenfranchisement by moving people arbitrarily from a twenty-two cycle to a twenty-four election cycle, and we tried to minimize that. That was one of the goals. There was also another goal stated by the committee repeatedly about keeping communities of interest together and communities together. And I know we tried very hard to keep every city, of course Wichita being so large, it was obviously going to be split up amongst different districts, but all of the other cities of Cedric County, for the most part, are in a single district. I think Kechai might be the one exception to that rule. But the email we got on Monday, it said, quote, unintentionally split between districts three and four, referring to the city of Mays. And it said, one of the main discussion points focused on communities of interest. And it says, with an emphasis on retaining communities in mind, I'm sorry, retaining those communities in mind, they offered two options, option one and option two. And I would term option two as a fairly big difference, probably unnecessary, but option one actually does restore Mays back to lines they have currently today, if I understand correctly. It reestablishes, if you will, the community into one district better than it does on MAP six, as it's currently being offered today. It also would move around six hundred people back to their normal election cycle, so it would reduce the disenfranchisement aspect. And then finally, you know, the idea of keeping communities of interest together, I think that, again, that being a goal is a good thing. Now, equivalency obviously is not as good, because right now, the MAP six is extremely equivalent in terms of, yes, it's not perfect. I think the biggest number of deviation for one of the districts is ninety-two people. But I would also argue that this changes pretty quickly. You know, we had about a five thousand person imbalance over a ten-year period last time. And so, just doing some simple math, these imbalances happen probably at a rate of around five hundred people or maybe more per year. And so even though maybe pretty close today with ninety-two people indifference according to the last year's census, in reality, that was last year's census. We don't really know where we are in twenty twenty-one, or where we're going to be in twenty twenty-two as we go forward. It's going to very rapidly move back out of balance once again. So it's a snapshot in time trying to be balanced. And so I guess my point would be this. What are the, these are competing goals. Trying not to disenfranchise people needlessly, retaining historic lines, I think is important, trying to keep communities of interest together. And I think if the committee, and if Tex wants to talk to this, it's totally fine, I don't know what he'll say, but seems to me the committee had an option of doing some, making this change. I don't know if it was intentional or unintentional that this was, by the committee, that this was done the way it was done. In one regard, one hundred nineteenth street's a clean line. But on the other hand, you're splitting up a community that doesn't need to be split up. So, anyway, staff did offer to us a couple of options, option one and option two, and I think option one is a very minor tweak to MAP six. MAP six is a great map. I support MAP six. But I think option one makes it even just ever so slightly better, because it does a couple of things that I think that maybe, I think are important. And so with that motion, I'd make a substitute motion. We'd do MAP six with option one as offered by staff.
Okay, there's a substitute motion to do MAP six with under option one. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? I don't see any, so the motion dies for lack of a second. So we go back to the original motion, which is MAP six. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you Chairman. I just wanted to make a few quick comments. I think it's an incredible show of how involved this community is by the number of comments that we received. Eighty-one people decided and took the time to comment to tell us how important they thought this decision was, and shared some insightful things with us. I also think it's really, it's really nice to see, as we watched the committee sort through all of this, how, just how they were able to work together for the betterment of the community. And I'm, I think it's nice to see two groups of people who traditionally might not always agree, voting fifteen zero for one map, and they decided on that together. So I appreciate the time that was taken because it was very fast, and people had to take time off of work. And so I just want to thank that committee for doing what they did and showing that we can work and get along in a bipartisan way. So, thank you so much for the time that you took. Thanks Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. As the motion carries, thanks again to the committee. Mike, thank you, and
Thank you Commissioners.
Mr. GIS, thank you sir for all your time. Just a small comment follow-up. We did receive a letter from the League of Women Voters. I don't really understand the letter very well, but of concern is they did, they did mention that there was dangerous behavior that we've seen this year. So I'm not sure what they mean by that, so I will reach out personally to the league to find out what they, what they mean by dangerous behavior, because that's probably something that we don't support as a commission, is dangerous behavior. So I will, I'll reach out, and any other Commissioners can as well. Okay, that's it. Thank you again, Mike. Next item, please.
Item E, a resolution of Cedric County, Kansas, joining the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic.
Okay, Mike, you're back up again. Been busy.
Thank you. Good morning again Commissioners, for the record, Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Before you today is a, what I would call a packet of operative documents that this commission may opt to use in order to join the statewide opioid litigation settlement. So I'll just go through a bit of background on this for your benefit and for the public's benefit. Earlier
Earlier this year, attorneys general from forty-five different states reached a potential settlement agreement with opioid producer Johnson &amp; Johnson and three major opioid distributors, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson. This settlement is in consideration for the harm that has been brought, really, to our country by the opioid, the production and widespread distribution of opioids that caused addiction issues and subsequent issues for people. The total amount of this potential settlement is $26 billion, and one of the state AGs that was on hand for this at the beginning was our Kansas Attorney General. So, this amount, if the settlement were to go through, would be shared by all states and local governments that have been harmed by the opioid crisis. Because the settlement offer was secured by the various attorneys general, Kansas law will govern the distribution of the funds. What's important, I think, to understand here is that we have brought our own lawsuits against these defendants and other defendants as well. Those defendants have not offered to settle our specific lawsuits with us at this point. Rather, what we are looking at here is a global settlement that's meant to settle and extinguish the vast majority of current and future claims against these defendants, all in one fell swoop. The defendants have structured the potential settlement to grow as more state and local governments opt to sign on. One thing that I'd like to highlight is that the attorneys that we hired originally to represent us in this litigation, by contract, they would be entitled to, I think, thirty-three and a third percent of any damages that we receive, but our attorneys have agreed to waive those, that right, and instead, they will draw their compensation from a specific fund that has also been set up by the defendants. So, another thing to bear in mind here is that if enough states and if enough local governments do not sign on, or as the defendants have termed it, if we don't reach critical mass here, the settlement will fail, the defendants will pull the deal, and litigation will pick up where it left off. One other thing to bear in mind here is that the settlement proposal also requires changes in the defendant's conduct. If the settlement goes through, then there will be the creation of what has been termed a clearinghouse, in which the distributors will be required to account not only for their own shipments of opioids, but also for the shipments of other distributors. And this is meant to address issues related to multiple distributors shipping opioids to the same individual, and so we can highlight those issues moving forward. Moreover, Johnson &amp; Johnson will agree to not market or sell any opioid products for the next ten years and has agreed to cease lobbying on that topic for the next ten years. And J&amp;J will also make clinical trial data for its discontinued opioids available for medical research to assist with the development of addiction treatments and things of that nature. So, we know that if this settlement were to go through, Kansas law would govern, so let's talk about the law that would govern. This is the Kansas Fights Addiction Act, House Bill 2079. This bill, this law provides for seventy-five percent of Kansas's settlement funds from opioid litigation being put into a state abatement fund. From that fund, local governments would be able to apply for grants, and the money will be overseen by an eleven-member review board that includes a member appointed by the Kansas Association of Counties. The balance, twenty-five percent of the settlement funds will be distributed directly to cities and counties commensurate with population and with damages. The twenty-five percent share is further broken up into two, as I understand, roughly equal pots of money. We have the standard share and the maximizing share. The standard share will be distributed both to litigating and non-litigating entities equally. So, when I say that, what I mean is that there are some counties and some cities that never opted to file their own lawsuits. We're not one of those. We're a litigating entity. In any event, the standard share will be distributed both to litigating and non-litigating equally. However, the maximizing share is set to grow based upon the number of entities that participate in the settlement, and the maximizing funds are paid to counties as follows. Fifty percent of the maximizing funds will be distributed only to litigating counties, and this is where we see a benefit from the lawsuit that we brought originally, lawsuits, I should say. The other fifty percent of the maximizing funds would be paid, split between litigating and non-litigating counties. So, what we see is a bump in the maximizing funds that is a benefit to us. And what we're looking at probably is about $3.8 million from this settlement alone over the next eighteen years, so we're looking at approximately $200,000 a year. The 2022 payment is currently in escrow, and so we are scheduled to receive that in 2023 if we opt to sign on, so we'll get two payments in 2023, as reflected in this table One thing that we have not talked about yet is the potential for future settlements. As you know, we've, this settlement only involves the big three distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson, but we've sued other entities. I have a non-exclusive list here. We've sued Purdue Pharma, Incest Therapeutics, and Mallinckrodt Pharmaceuticals. All three of those entities are currently in bankruptcy, and those bankruptcies deal heavily with the debt that they have based upon their opioid lawsuits that were brought against them. So, it's possible that Kansas and through which us will receive additional funds through those bankruptcies. As you can see, we've sued some other manufacturers. We've also sued some dispensers as well, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. That litigation, as I understand it, is still, it's not, it's still more in its infancy, so we may see results from that in the future. We might not, but there is the potential for more. So, let's talk then about the resolution that's before you right now. This resolution does three things. The first thing that it does is that it ensures that Cedric County will spend its portion of the settlement funds on mitigation of the opioid crisis. This is something that's required by the Kansas Fights Addiction Act. There have been large settlements in the past where there's been an allegation that the funds were not used to mitigate the lawsuit that created those funds, but the Kansas Fights Addiction Act attempts to counteract that by requiring that both the state fund and the local funds must be spent on opioid and other drug addiction mitigation efforts. The second thing that this resolution does is that it authorizes the chairman to sign a contract between Cedric County and the Kansas Attorney General in which the county signs over its current and future opioid litigation rights. So, once we get on this train, we stay on it, and any settlement funds received by Kansas will be threaded through the Kansas Fights Addiction Act and distributed to us according to that formula that we already talked about. This is also required by the Kansas Fights Addiction Act. Finally, the resolution will authorize the chairman to sign current and future participation settlement forms that would be needed to claim Cedric County's portion of the settlements. So, that is the long and short of it. It is staff's recommendation that you enter into this resolution and join the statewide settlement. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mike, thanks a lot. You and Mr. Papoun and others have been working on this. I think this was signed up to join our separate litigation before three of us were even elected.
Yes.
And so, there's a little bit of history with my colleagues, and our hope was, I don't know, our hope was better than what this is, but it looks like the federal court system has left us minimal or no options, so.
Yes, I believe that's true. If we were not to join the settlement, we would be on our own. We would still have our lawsuits filed against these distributors, but we would be required to move forward with a trial in all likelihood. It's unknown whether our current counsel would continue to represent us in that endeavor or not. It's representing hundreds is a lot more efficient than representing one, and there's no guarantee that we would win if we went to trial. There have been a number of bellwether trials on this. Some have been successful and some have not, and for those plaintiffs that lost, they get nothing, and they can't participate in a settlement at that point either.
Thanks for clarifying further. Maybe a comment or two. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the work of our legal office on this. Commissioner Howell and I were the only two commissioners that are still here that entered into this litigation a number of years ago, and we followed it with great interest ever since that time. We had greater hopes than what we saw in that chart with us getting $200,000 a year for a number of years. We had some plans to how we could use any of the proceeds from a court case. I truly do understand why the litigants would want to work with fifty states rather than the thousands of people that entered into this lawsuit to begin with. It makes sense to me. My only disappointment is really that the state of Kansas passed a law that scrapes off seventy-five percent of the initial portion, and we get twenty-five percent. That kind of disappoints me, and as a result of that, that's why you saw the chart where we're only getting $200,000 a year out of a fairly large settlement because we're only getting twenty-five percent initially. Now, that doesn't mean that that's the total amount that we'll get. We do have the possibility of putting in for grants to receive a portion of that other seventy-five percent, and being a large county as we are, I'm certain that we should be able to fare well with those grants. But all said, when I first heard about this, Mr. Fessinger can attest that I was not pleased, and, but I don't know that we have a choice at this point in time. If we want to get anything out of this lawsuit, this is probably the only direction that we have to go. So, as a result, as I said, Commissioner Howell and I have been watching this very closely, and at this point, I'd make a motion that we adopt the resolution to join the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic, authorize the chairman to sign the settlement participation forms regarding the Kansas settlement and the distributor settlement, approve the agreement to release the assigned claims to the Kansas Attorney General, and authorize the chairman to sign. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz seconds it. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a quick question around the, on the ninth page, it talks about it ensures that Cedric County will spend its settlement funds on mitigation of the opioid crisis. So, will that be, will this money be put into, you know, what exactly does that mean?
And I'll let Lindsay Povrussow correct me if I get this wrong, but as I understand it, this money will flow into the general fund, but it can only be spent for certain purposes, and we need to account for that. And those purposes would be, you know, treatment and mitigation of the opioid crisis, and in my view, and in my view, that would include other addiction issues as well related to the opioid crisis. And I see that Lindsay's approaching, so I'll let her provide a more complete answer for you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Povrussow, you're CFO. So, Mike is exactly right. It does have to flow into the general fund for now, but I do know there's also discussion about, at a state level, potentially creating a specific fund that these funds would then be received into at the county level, and so that'll likely be some legislation that we may work on to get introduced into the session next year so that we can have a cleaner way to do that than just put it in the general fund and earmark it that way.
Do we have the numbers around what it's currently costing us?
I do not with me, but we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay, that would be an interesting number to see and see how this will or will not put a dent in the cost that we're spending.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just curiously, do we know the background of House Bill 2079? When was that passed?
It was passed during the 2020 session, but I might be incorrect on that, but I do know that there was a attempt previous to that to have a bill that was even more beneficial to the state, and that did fail.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think it was this past session.
Do you know whether we engaged the committee and, I guess, the bill as it was being debated? Was Cedric County in the room and advocated for our perspective on that?
I don't believe we were. I think at the time, the thought was that we had our own lawsuits and that this law would not affect us. I know that we were advised that. What we did not foresee was that the state AGs would come in and secure their settlement before our attorneys and our lawsuits and our negotiating class would secure our settlement. So, there was a bit of a race, and we did not foresee that the AGs would get there first.
And just for background, what year did we initiate this lawsuit?
Twenty seventeen.
Seventeen. And after Cedric County did that, a year or so later, if I recall, I think the city of Wichita got in about a year or so later?
I think that's correct, yes.
And after that is when the state decided to, I guess, finally climb on board. Is that fair?
I think so, yes.
So, we were first at the, first at bat, and they were third at bat, so to speak. If I understand correctly, if we don't sign this today, the state also potentially suffers loss.
Well, that's true, that the state cannot receive damages for our claims. Our claims would still be ours, and we would be free to pursue those, so that is true.
So, one of my frustrations today, of course, is timing. I think right now, I wish we had time to negotiate with the state because they're going to benefit from our work, our investment, our vision to get involved in this from the very beginning is to their benefit, and we don't have time to negotiate. We have a deadline now, and so, as Commissioner Dennis said, we have a choice between probably zero or this, which in my opinion is a pittance compared to what we were promised or what we talked about at the very beginning. I feel like it's a bait and switch, and so this is highly disappointing, and this wasn't supposed to turn out this way. So, part of me, the bad angel, the demon over here says, don't sign it, let them suffer because this, you know, let them see what we've done and let them negotiate, and let's force our hand a little bit. The other side says, something's better than nothing. Grow up and, you know, let's just go forward. I have this competing thoughts right now. I feel like we're going to go forward, but this is really not what I want to do. I feel like I have to do this because there is no other great option for Cedric County. I think, as Commissioner Dennis said, this is going to hopefully go and help some things here in Cedric County, but the reality is, the reason this lawsuit's so big is because there are damages in Cedric County, and this is not going to even begin to address the problems we've had going back. Now, I think things are better today than they were because there's a lot of things that happened at the distributor level that have actually cleaned up a lot of the problems that happened that caused this lawsuit to exist in the first place, but there are damages, and this doesn't even begin to address the challenges we have had in the past and are going to continue to have going forward. And so, this is highly disappointing. I think the reality is, it feels like a bait and switch. I guess I'll support the motion, but I'll tell you what, this is not the way things should have turned out, and if we had more time, I would love to negotiate with Kansas, let them know they win because we're going to come to them and negotiate something between those two points, but right now, twenty-five percent, as it was described, it's really not even twenty-five percent because twenty-five percent is split between cities and counties. And other counties get part of that twelve and a half percent. So, it's not just Cedric County getting twelve and a half percent, it's actually split amongst other municipalities as well. So, it's really such a tiny amount of money, even compared to what the state's getting, and of course, we can apply for those grants, and I assume we'll get some of that money back based on demonstrated need and that type of thing, but it's just not at all what we thought we were going to get when we started this back in 2017. So, with that, I'll support the motion, but I'll just tell you, this is not, this is not a good day for Cedric County in terms of how this turned out. That's my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. You express the frustration that we all feel with this. The reality when it hit us is very true. If there's a positive outlook, you mentioned the seventy-five percent. I mean, I think it's inherent on us to apply aggressively and strongly in that grant world and maybe use our negotiating connections and skills to try to get a chunk, a good chunk of the seventy-five percent.
Yeah, I think given our size and the scope of the epidemic when it hit us, I think we are well positioned to obtain significant funds from that, but I don't, at this point, want to overpromise. We'll do our best.
Now, you're the, okay. So, with that, we have a motion and a second to approve, and with good comments as well. But I don't see any other comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks again, Mike, and Mr. Papoun, thank you for your work on this. So, next item, please.
Item F, WineDOT Nation Cross Winds Casino Service and Funding Agreement.
Mr. Leeds, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Commissioners, this is a service agreement, a service and funding agreement with the WineDOT Nation. The WineDOT Nation is a federally recognized Indian tribe. The WineDOT Nation constructed and opened the Cross Wind Casinos in Park City on land that is held in trust by the United States Department of Interior for the use and benefit of the nation. The casino opened on March 2nd of 2021. Cedric County provides services for the benefit of Park City and the area where the casino is located, including, but not limited to, public safety services, EMS, 911, the jail, some sheriff response to back Park City, and things like that. In cooperative discussions with the nation, they did propose and agree to provide compensation contributions for the services that we provide to that area in the amount of $77,000. contributions for the services that we provide to that area in the amount of $77,686 on an annual basis. The initial term is for three years, '21, '22, '23, with the initial period ending in April of '24. However, the contract is written such that if neither side gives six, or gives notice of an intent to end the contract or renegotiate, that it would continue on perpetually beyond that date. The funds, if approved, of $77,686 would be remitted to general fund on an annual basis. So with that, the recommendation is to approve the agreement, authorize the board chair to sign the agreement, and I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Okay. Rusty, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. You summarized hours of meetings and negotiations in a three-minute presentation.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Commissioner Cruz for helping take the lead, and I was able to help assist in those negotiations as the commission, they, we wanted two of us to there. So I want to thank you, thank Mike, thank Lindsey for the financial background support and the analysis. And we were hoping to a little bit more, but, but I think this was about as good as we could deal. And, and they're, they're a good operation, and they want to be a team player in the community. They already are showing team players, playership up in the Park City area and others they expressed. And I, I, I trust those, those comments, many of those comments that were made during our, our meeting. And they could have justified a lesser amount. It could have been justified a lesser amount than this. We were, as I said, we were hoping for a little more, but this, that's why we did the three-year agreement, so we could watch and see the development and all the growth and all the impact. And so personally, I'm very comfortable with what we've accomplished, so I'll make a motion that we approve this. The motion in a second. Commissioner Dennis, got a question or comment?
Thank you. One, one quick question. It's not just fire that we support up there. We use EMS, we use Sheriff's Department, a lot of, how is this divided up? How much is going into the general fund for fire and how much is going in for all of the other services?
Yes, sir. This, to be clear, this, this is a two-part agreement. Actually, it was negotiated as a single amount with the intent for that to be split essentially as mill levy equivalents between Sedgwick County and the Fire District, being separate taxing entities. So the agreement was for $125,000 annually to be divided between the county and the Fire District based on mill levy equivalency. So Sedgwick County, in support of those departments and those services that Sedgwick County provides, is $77,000, $686. The balance of that, $47,314, would be the mill levy equivalent for the Fire District, who provides fire, medical first response and technical rescue services up in that area as well.
Very good. Well, I just wanted to make it clear that we're going to have another chance to hear from you during the fire agenda.
Right. Yes, sir.
And this is really a two-part. I just wanted the public to know that the total is 125,000.
That is correct. 125,000 annually for the initial term of three years unless circumstances change, unless development on their property, additional development occurs.
Good. And again, thank you. Thanks to the chairman and the pro temp for negotiating this. We do this not just with the Indian casino, but Techtron, Spirit. We coordinate these things with a large number of different organizations, so this is not out of the ordinary. But again, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments? I guess Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Rusty, for helping out with all of this. It was an experience to work with Chief Billy Friend on finding the best solution for both of us. I think the chairman really mentioned how the partnerships have, have been developed, and it's exciting to see that the potential of 90 additional acres that the casino could develop for retail, hotel, and so there is so much potential, and Park City is just kind of booming. So it's, I'm glad that we were able to get this accomplished, and I appreciate the help of all involved. Thank you, Chairman.
You bet. Thank you for your comments. I don't see any others, so there's a motion and a second to approve the agreement as presented. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, update on COVID-19 fiscal response.
Your stack is not quite as large as normal.
No, it's not. For the record, Lindsey Povrussow, CFO, and you'll notice that you have a one-page handout from me. I think this may be a record, so enjoy it while it lasts. So this is hopefully going to be a much shorter presentation than you heard last week. It is a follow-up from what we discussed last week on the 2022 first quarter ARPA spending plan. You will remember that there was one portion that was removed to get some additional questions answered related to a CIP project for the sheriff's office. I believe that information has been provided, and the sheriff had sent some information last week. So what you'll see in your presentation today, you'll see some gray font that is intentional. That is to show that that is already approved, so we did already have these categories approved as a part of your spending plan last week. But on this slide, it was the design work for the CIP project that had been tabled for discussion. And so that is $224,800. And so if we add that back in to what you have been asked to approve, that brings it back to the original total of $10,744,364. One of the questions last week had been about the number of savings, I think, that would be generated as a result of doing this CIP, and based on what the sheriff has been able to provide, we're in excess of potentially 1.2 million budget savings each year. So certainly, the project is around 2.8 million right now, estimated total, even after this design work is done. And so those dollars would recoup, and then hopefully those dollars could be reallocated to support the maintenance and all of the costs associated with this CIP work down the road. So with that, hopefully you have the information you need, and I would recommend you approve.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsey. And you're right, we went really in-depth last week with all of this, the balance of this was the leftover, the hanging chad, so to speak, that was left. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. And I had a lot of questions last week on the one item. And as a result, Commissioner Lopez and I were able to meet with the sheriff last Friday so that we could get clarification on what that one item was. And really, my, my concern revolved around, ARPA money is one-time money. And so if we start spending one-time money and then we incur large expenses later on, that comes out of general fund. So that was where my concern revolved around. I don't like spending one-time money that, that ends up costing us a fortune later on. So the sheriff assured me that what this is going to allow him to do is he will actually be able to reduce the number of deputies, detention deputies, by 24, and we will be able to recover from the cost savings of that, the wages and salaries, in order to be able to continue this forward. So spending one-time money is smart if you've got a plan for going to the future so that we're not incurring huge expenses. And I appreciate the time the sheriff Easter spent with Commissioner Lopez and I Friday so that we understood the whole thing, because I didn't get that out of our briefing last week. That's why I was very concerned with, with moving forward with this. One of the things that we're going to see, this $380,134 is just the very first part of that. There's a fairly large expense coming up that we'll be approving in later quarters to be able to put all of these cameras and so forth in the detention facility. But it, it makes sense to me now. Last week, I apologized, Lindsey, I didn't understand what you were telling me, and I did not want to incur huge expenses as we moved forward. So with that, I think what the decision is, is on court backlog, Part II for this $380,000, that's what you need approval on in order to be able to finalize the entire thing, correct?
I think it's actually the $224,800. If I could get approval for that, please.
The dark black. The dark black.
Very good.
This right here. Apologies.
I will make a motion that we approve the design for the CIP for 10 pods, $224,800.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll second that, and also had a chance to visit with Sheriff Easter, a little in-depth. It was very, very educational. Running a, running a jail is no easy task, that's for sure. And, and it's good if tech, as technology, if he can take advantage of technology to help efficiencies and safety and, and eventual costs, it's, it's a, it's a good step forward. So I will second the motion. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Lindsey. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, consideration of a funding request of $100,000 by PBS Kansas.
Good morning, Brent.
Good morning, Chairman Meitzner. Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. The item before you is the consideration of a non-recurring $100,000 funding request for PBS Kansas. PBS Kansas is formerly known as KPTS Channel 8. They've been operating in this community since 1970 as a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit public television station. Their mission is to provide educational enrichment and entertaining television to central Kansas viewers, and as part of that, they are televising live this meeting today. The specific request today is, as I said, non-recurring, $100,000, and it would provide for 25-year naming rights for the community room in the new facility that PBS Kansas is moving to. Earlier this year, they signed a contract to move to a new facility on 32nd Street. It's a little bit east of Rock Road, about 31,000 square feet, and that almost quadruples the space that they currently occupy on 21st Street North, just west of Broadway, which is about an 8,000-square-foot facility, needing additional space for additional programming and, and some of the services they provide to the community. Now, the funding stack for the new facility of about $4 million is comprised of donations, some debt financing, and then they're also providing these opportunities for naming rights to different individuals and organizations throughout the community. In addition to the community room, they have broadcast studios and other portions of the facility for which naming rights can be purchased. Looking to this specific request, if you approve the $100,000 request today for these naming rights, there would be a plaque indicating that the county is the sponsor of that community room. It'll house about 60 people. They'd available to community organizations for meetings. They also have a new initiative, the Children's Discovery and Education Center, which would be part of the, of the, of the new offerings at PBS at their new facility. It's open to the public, free of charge, some revolving and rotating exhibits for children. In addition to that, there would be recognition on the Wall of Giving, which is in the lobby of PBS Kansas' new, new facility. With us today, I think we have Victor, Victor Hogstrom, the president and CEO of PBS Kansas. Terry Brooks is also here, their development director. I think they're here to answer any specific questions that you might have. I'm available as well. My recommendation would be that you take action as the board deems necessary. I'm available for questions, as are the representatives from PBS.
Okay, any questions at this time? I don't see any. Victor, I know you've been sitting here, so you're more than welcome to come and address us if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my name is Victor Hogstrom, the president of your public television station, PBS Kansas. And I'd first like to commend Mr. Shelton for his presentation, well-rounded and very much correct. Thank you again. Everything was correct, and here we have a public television station that has been struggling in our community, almost out of business, but has been revived. We need to take it to the next level because public television, as you know, is quite a valuable instrument for any community. It teaches. It educates. It provides culture, supports the arts stem. And this is why we have all of these various things going in the new building. You heard about the Children's Education and Discovery Center. Public television, this station is a community licensee. There are four types of public television stations. One is a board of education-owned, and those are very few in America, in huge cities, Chicago, Miami, Los Angeles, Atlanta, and a few other large cities. The second type is a state-owned licensed public broadcasting station, and this type is owned by the state, Oklahoma Public Broadcasting, Iowa, Nebraska. And what that means, those institutions bang-roll those stations. And the third type is owned by universities, similar situation. Universities own stations, but they support them tremendously. And the fourth type, which is in the majority in America, is the community licensee. Well, you are the supporters. The community is the owner. The community is the supporting, the lifeblood of the public television station, the community licensee, because we don't have a board of education, a state, nor do we have a university to help us out. We have to raise 73% of our budget, operating budget, locally. And so when you put that, create that picture and set it aside, and then use the fact that we are now trying to acquire and improve the services of the station by, through the acquisition of a larger building that would help us serve our community better, it's double efforts in fundraising. And that's why we're asking you to help us out. We don't normally come to you and ask us for contributions to operate the station. We do that on our own, but this is a special deal. It's a deal that I think every citizen, every local government should be proud of within our community, because when public television was founded in the United States 50-something years ago, it was done so with a partnership in mind, the federal government, local government, state government, the community foundations and corporations with individuals. Well, in England, it's a tax, the charge on TV sets that you have, to support the BBC. In Japan, it's 100% funded by the government. In Canada, 100%, and throughout Europe. In the United States, it was formed with a partnership in mind. And so I ask you to please consider that partnership and help your public television station thrive and go to the next level, because you, my friends, will be very proud.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Victor, thank you for being here today. How long have you been at KPTS here in Wichita now?
Five years.
Five years. And I think when you and I first met, one of the very first things we talked about was trying to find a replacement facility. How long have you been in the old facility here in Wichita?
About 42, 43 years.
The community is not familiar with that. Where is it currently located? The current?
The new one?
The, the older studio. Where is it located?
Oh, 320 West, 21st Street North, between Waco and Broadway.
Yeah. And I've been in that building, I don't know how many times. I mean, the reason I go, go there primarily is because of some of the programming. You guys produce some shows that educate the community on local politics, local and state politics, and you also highlight people in this community. And so I've had a number of reasons why I've had to go to the building and meet the building and meet with people there over the years. Every time I walk in, I notice it's extremely small, and it doesn't really meet the needs, and so the vision you had from the very beginning was to find a new space, and I think you and I have talked about this over the years. And your new location, where is it located now?
8710 East 32nd Street North.
So I got to tour that building. It seems to be very spacious. It seems like it's going to be, it's going to have all the new technology. It's going to be able to produce new shows and that type of thing. I think most of the Commissioners have actually been on the one-on-one with Victor Hogstrom. Is that true? I think most of us have been on there.
Yeah, most of you have, yeah.
I think at least four of us have done that. You guys still produce the This Week in Kansas show. It's every Friday, and it gets broadcast a couple times. You also do broadcast the Board of County Commissioners meetings, and you've done that, I don't know how long. I'm going to say probably decades. This goes back a long time.
Right.
And that's not just the one time. It's also rebroadcast, and I also know when I first became a Commissioner, I was surprised to find out that I'm getting email from Western Kansas, because it's not just the local area. It's actually broadcast statewide, and I've had people across the state come and ask me questions regarding Sedgwick County, because they're watching our meetings through KPTS. And so to me, that was interesting to learn that. I would say that I, this is, I've talked to our CFO, and I believe there's money in our Economic Development Fund that would be reasonably suited for this reason, this purpose. Normally, we might have used what we call contingency funds, but there's only not, there's not funds available. Overall, our budget's doing pretty well this year. In fact, I think we have reasons to celebrate in terms of our budget. It looks really good. We've underspent many areas of our budget, and that's really good for Sedgwick County. Our budget is healthy in terms of we've not overspent this year, and that's a good thing. In years past, we have used end-of-year budgets that were, had some authority left in them for community investment, and I have a whole list I could go through, but I think this is one of those things where I view this as a community investment. Again, the community room is one of those things. This would be located in District One, it's where it's physically located, but the community can access this, and I think that this is a good investment for the community. There is an item on the consent agenda. I don't know if you want to spend time talking about that or not, but since you are here, there's been some discussion, at least I had at least one conversation, about there's some concerns because the costs on the broadcasting services of KPTS are going up a little bit. Is there anything you want to share about that? Because I know there's some concerns about the increased contract costs, and I would like to give you a chance to at least address that if you want to do that.
Thank you, I will. Thank you, and the reason for that increase is because costs are just going up. PBS alone increased, you know, we have to pay, well, before I answer that, let me explain that in public broadcasting, we pay PBS, and we pay them close to about $700,000 a year for the programs. In commercial broadcasting, the commercial stations receive some payments from the networks, because they run the national commercials. We don't get any checks from PBS. PBS is a member organization, and they increase their cost 10 and a half, or I think 11 and a half percent to us, just for the programs. And we have also observed that in order to hire any qualified person, our budgeted amounts that we had in our little $3.3 million budget would not accommodate hiring good people for the station. So we are meeting these challenges also of having to increase salaries to hire more qualified people. And that's part of the story, plus the fact that materials, supplies, the electric bill has gone up, water bill has gone up, I mean, all the bills have gone up, operating costs have gone up, and that's part of the whole challenge that we're facing.
And you know, I know some people do watch this, did, you know, streaming services, and that's totally fine, but KPTS also does broadcast for free, so it doesn't require any internet or whatever to watch a broadcast that comes over the air. And one other thing I've learned is KPTS does a closed caption for our hearing impaired audience and...
And descriptive video services.
Very good. Thank you for that. But the file that you guys create is a baseline file for our county clerk's office that goes through our minutes. They review our meetings and clean it up a little bit perhaps, but they do use that service as a way to generate the majority of our minutes. We do what's called verbatim minutes, which I love. You can go back and find out exactly who said what. And I know I talk a lot. Our minutes are usually, you know, could be 100 pages long for one of our meetings, and that text primarily comes from closed captioning services through KPTS. So it's against another service. So there's lots of reasons why I appreciate KPTS and our relationship with KPTS, and I'll highlight, we have four main areas in the county that we, as Commissioners, focus on. There are public safety, human services, infrastructure, and finally, quality of life. Quality of life is a big investment. That's why we invest in things like Sedgwick County Zoo, Exploration Place, Sedgwick County Park, Lake Aft, and on and goes. In the years past, we've given money to two museums, just in the last few years, two museums, USS Wichita, Doc's Friends, Boundless Playscape, Family Crisis Center. By the way, that was one-time money, but Humankind, just a few weeks, a couple months ago, you gave money to Humankind, and it sounds like that's more about operations than one-time intended money. So there's a discussion that has to happen on that going forward. Sedgwick County Fair Building, we gave $110,000. And by the way, the majority of Sedgwick County citizens don't go to the fair, but there's $110,000 given to that project. And we recently, over three years, gave $6 million to the zoo. Some of that was budgeted, but the initial part of that, the $2 million in 2019, was this type of spending out of end-of-year performing budgets. We gave $100,000 to KVC. We, and I could go on. There's plenty of examples where we use end-of-year spending. Now, by the way, it was three or four months ago, we talked about potentially doing it there in 2021, and we held you off. We said, we'll wait until the very last meeting of the year to have this conversation to find out if there's money anywhere in the budget that would support this type of use. And again, I've identified economic development as a community investment for quality of life of Sedgwick County for all the reasons I've already stated. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We would approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I don't know if this needs to go to Lindsay or Brent, whoever, whichever was placed. So when Commissioner Howell's talking about where this funding would come from, other contingency or economic development, can you explain how much we have in contingency and where that would go, or where it could potentially go, how it normally is spent at the end of the year, just so we have a better idea?
Sure. Commissioner Lopez, speaking first to the Economic Development Fund, there's a balance right now of about $146,000 in that fund, so there would be budget authority in that fund for this expenditure. But to your broader question about contingencies, in general terms, we typically budget $20 to $25 million in contingencies year over year, hoping that we don't have to use that money. Right now, we're at about $3.2 million left in all of our contingency funds. We've got a $2.1 million ask out of those contingency funds for some of the increases in risk management due to those higher insurance costs, some of the hard market types of expenses. So we're down to about $1 million in our contingency funds. Historically, if we look back, say, to 2018, that would be the lowest that we've been other than this, and in 2018, we ended the year with about $3 million. But we had about $11 million in one-time expenses. Most of that then got funded later through debt funding going into the future years. But in 2019, we ended with about $12.5 million. 2019, about $18.7 million. So I guess the concern, and I guess it's incumbent upon us in finance to let you know that we're at a historically low level with the contingencies, and it's an uncertain year. We've got some additional COVID expenses, which could come out of that remaining $1 million in contingencies.
How much are we spending monthly on COVID expenses now, and do we have enough to cover that for the rest of the year?
We're spending about $800,000 a year, and we've got this month left. So it's getting close. Knowing what we know today, we can probably do it, but again, it's an uncertain year.
And if we do run out of contingencies and we still have bills to pay, how do we cover those costs?
We would be looking to leftover funds in other departmental budgets. So we'd be moving things.
So it could be like out of the Economic Development Fund that could go over. Okay. I am concerned just because of kind of where you're saying we're at. I do feel like we have a strong partnership with this organization, and we have for so long. Would it be possible to do half of it from the economic development budget this year and then half of it in 2022 out of contingency or economic development, I mean, whichever way that could go, but would that make that easier to do this year, or at least start that this year, since we have, you know, asked them to come back at this meeting?
It would provide us with a little more flexibility, but I don't know that it completely mitigates that risk that we may be looking at. So, I mean, $50,000 less in 2021, and then would give us a little more flexibility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I feel like there is a lot to consider with this, but I am going to second the motion, and for these reasons. I do believe that when it comes to educational-type programming and public television, there has, the Knight Foundation asked a journalist to examine what exactly public television does for communities. So she traveled around the world. Her name is Sue Gardner, and she produced a report that talks about how public service media compared to commercial media produces more hard news, more international news, more domestic politics, more current affairs programming. People who are watching public television are also exposed and are likelier to vote. They're better informed than people exposed to TV on private television, likelier to have more realistic perceptions of their societies, less likely to express negative attitudes toward immigration and immigrants, and they also have higher levels of social trust and social cohesion. I am a firm believer in providing educational programming that is worthwhile and builds trust in our community, and so that is exactly why I plan to support this motion today. Thank you.
Okay. And you said that, you seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reflect on Commissioner Lopez's comment, there is budget authority in the Economic Development Fund right now to fund this, if that's what we chose to do. It's a policy choice, but is there money in that fund to fund this in 2021? Yes, sir, there is. Does it help the 2022 budget, other than, again, any dollars that are not spent in 2021 roll over to someplace in the 22 budget somewhere? But that money is fungible right now. There was the end-of-year, any end-of-year budgets that have end-of-year balances left in them, they go to wherever designation's within the 22 budget they need to go to. In other words, the Economic Development Fund is reset, the contingency fund is reset, all those numbers, and again, there's money that's not even earmarked, it's in the ending balance. We have $107 million, I believe, in ending balance at the end of this year right now, kind of a record-level number. But this, any monies that are not spent at the end of 2021 is earmarked within the budget next year, and all those budgets are reset back to what we passed in August, and any other monies that are not earmarked within those budgets is sitting in the ending balance numbers. Is that a fair way to say that?
I think so, yes, sir.
I guess I'm saying, is there a reason that you can think of, or would you like to opine of it a little bit? Does it help us to push this off to 2022 based on the fact there's money, we have a budget authority in 2021 in the Economic Development Fund for this community investment? Is there any reason to push this off that you can articulate?
I think the only concern that we have at this point, coming from a finance perspective, is that if we look at that five-year history of where we end up with contingency reserves, we're at a historic low over that five-year period, and except for 2020, this is an uncertain time. So we know that we're, if we use contingency reserves to fund those COVID expenses, we're going to be around $200,000 at this point, which is...
Could we use Economic Development Fund for some COVID response?
We did earlier this year. We used, I think, $1.1 million was out of economic development, was used for support the testing program.
Do we have, do we have ARPA funds available for covering the testing costs at this point?
We do, and I think what we're just looking at, from a budget authority perspective, we don't, we can't exceed our budget authority that's been established. So that's from the perspective we're looking at this point.
Well, it sounds to me like the biggest concern that you've articulated so far is within the contingency fund specifically, and this is not that, this is not that part. This is a different part. This is Economic Development Fund. Okay. All right. Again, I don't know that pushing this off necessarily helps anything in the budget, other than it's just unspent funds. We can use other ways next year. That is a truth, absolutely. But in terms of, you know, cash flow within the budget, I don't think there's an argument there that I can think of. Anyway, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, first of all, Victor, thanks for being here. We appreciate what KPTS Public Broadcasting does for our community, and one of the ways that we get our word out is using Channel Eight along with Facebook and YouTube, so that's one of the options that we have. Do have a question. Is Wichita contributing to this, or is just Sedgwick County?
I'm not aware that the city of Wichita is contributing to the capital campaign.
Have you asked Wichita?
We are asking, and we're working on it, yes.
Okay, but so far, they haven't said anything?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Brent, one of the things that Commissioner...
One of the things we've discussed so far is, we've heard that our balance is healthy. Would you classify it as healthy?
I think we have healthy cash balances. It's from a budget authority perspective that we're talking about those concerns, and we look specifically at those contingencies. That's where, like we said, have said it before, it's a historically low number over the look of the last five years.
And as we move into the next year, we're still going to have expenses from this year that you're going to be spending, correct? Do we know all of those expenses right now?
No, sir. We don't know.
So we're going to approve this possibly without knowing exactly where we're at financially going into the next year?
True. I mean, it is historically uncertain time. We do have those other federal funds with ARPA and so forth, but those are specifically earmarked to pandemic response.
But we still got bills that are coming that we don't know about yet.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to have to spend it from someplace, because we don't, we can't print money. We're not the federal government.
No, sir.
Okay. One of the things that Victor said is that all our bills have gone up, all of our bills have gone up, haven't they?
Can't think of any that haven't.
So our budget is very constrained as we move forward. I have a problem when we have 2,000 nonprofits across the community, and we start picking winners and losers. And the last time we did this, we suddenly started getting a rash of folks saying, hey, me too, me too, and it's going to continue. Our property tax bills are coming due on the 20th, the first half of them. Do we really think that the citizens out here that do have an opportunity to contribute to KPTS, that they want to take their property tax money that they're going to send us and pay for another nonprofit that they're not supporting on their own? I just don't believe that that's a good idea. We're choosing which nonprofits to support. The other question I have is, right now, when I talked with the sheriff last week, he's about 80 short detention deputies, we're short over in corrections, we're still short in EMS, we're short in 911, we're short in... in EMS, we're short in 911, we're short in comm care. And the reason, it comes down to we're not paying them enough. And so we're going to be seeing some huge increases, I think, in what we're going to have to pay in order to start filling those positions. Because Sedgwick County, their job, our job is to provide services to the community. Our job is not to support nonprofits. So if we're going to provide services to the community, it's going to cost us. And if I've got a choice between giving it to a nonprofit or giving it to our staff, I'm going to choose our staff 100% of the time. That's my job. My job is to listen to the staff on what their needs are in order to be able to provide the goods and services that we are required to do across this. So Victor, I appreciate what you do. I just can't support this. I do not think it's the right thing for us to do to continue to decide every time that a commissioner decides he wants to, or she wants to support a nonprofit, that we're going to start giving taxpayers' money away to nonprofits. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of comments. We never know the future in any year. In past years, when we earmarked $2 million for the zoo in 2019, we didn't know what bills were coming in. It was an investment in the community. We have a longstanding relationship with the zoo, and that was a great thing that we did, I think, as a county. And the zoo's going to absolutely use that money for great things and for this community. We gave $110,000 to the Sedgwick County Fair for a building. That was an investment. We did not know what bills were going to be coming in at that point. By the way, every single year I've been here, we've been 50, 60, 70 sheriff deputies, detention deputies down. We've enhanced their salary significantly here this year in 2021 and going forward into 2022. And we are trying to do what we can to fix that. If we really wanted to do a priority-based budget, then I would say all the money in the Quality of Life budget should be stripped as needed to fully support public safety as a higher priority, if that's what we want to do. But we continue to give money to all kinds of things across our budget, not just, I mean, it's not, honestly, budgeting is not that simple. I think we are doing our very best to pay our staff the best we possibly can. As important as public safety is, and it is very, very important, probably the most important part of our budget is public safety. And I agree with that. We still fund quality-of-life things across the county. What makes KPTS different than some of these other things is that we have a longstanding relationship with them. And then again, this is a community room that the community can use. And it is, it's an investment in our community. It's for education. It's for people to understand what's going on in Sedgwick County as they continue to produce these shows to educate our community. But you look at this list of spending in years past, every time one of these issues came up, we could have made the very same arguments. And yet, I believe that most commissioners, if not all the commissioners, supported almost all of these things. Some of the things that were on this list were brought forward by the very same commissioners that are opposing this now. So I would just say, once again, I think this is becoming more political than it should be. I think this is an investment in our community. And again, each of us can vote our conscience and vote as we think is best. That's totally fine. But the idea that we have to know all of our bills in 2022 before we can possibly do this, I don't think that's a fair argument. And the idea that we're somehow not funding public safety because we invest in our community and do quality-of-life things in our budget, I don't think that's a fair argument as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I encourage us to go ahead and get on with the vote. Thank you, Chairman.
We'll try to get on to the vote as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dennis, you were next. Do you want to go or you want...
Just very briefly, certainly we've supported things in the past, but as Brent mentioned, we had healthy balances as we went into the year-end in the past. This is a different year. So we have to make hard decisions. So I appreciate your comments, but I disagree. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. So I'm really torn on this because I see both sides of this argument and can agree to parts of both of them. So I really don't think, at least I don't feel like I see this as a political decision, but what really makes the most logical sense as far as taking care of the county, knowing the obstacles that we, I mean, we're all kind of working on these conversations that are happening and really where we're at with the county as far as retaining our workforce and making sure people are paid what they deserve to be paid so we don't lose departments. I mean, we've all seen, and I'm sure headlines with EMS and all these other departments are really struggling right now. And so I do feel, you know, I agree with what Commissioner Dennis is saying, but I also agree and understand the importance of our public television service. So because I hear you, and I think we need to listen to the experts on this and how we really gauge this, and if we can find a middle ground here where we can still fund this but half now so we can still help you with your balances, like what you're saying, I hear how you're trying to caution us here with the budget authority. So if we could take half in '21 out of ECO and then half in '22 out of the contingency, it gives you a little bit more padding. We still can pass this. But I do think going forward, for any request from community partners and funding, we really need to think about and figure out the best way forward. And if we can continue doing that, and if we do, at the expense of what? Because, I mean, I think we're going to be looking at some hard conversations coming up soon on services we provide and if we're going to be able to continue them at the same level we are today. So I would like to amend this to 20, half of it, $50,000 this year out of our Economic Development Fund and half of it in '22 out of contingency.
Okay, there's a substitute motion in a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I hate to say this, but I'm going to have to oppose that motion. And the reason why is because it's precedent-setting. Our history here is we've taken end-of-year budget performance, and we've considered these types of requests in the past. We've pushed this off for several months to get to this point. To do this out of the beginning budget of 2022 is precedent-setting. I think it's opening Pandora's box. As Commissioner Dennis said, we have 2,000 charities out there, and every one of them doing great things. They all want some kind of support from the community, from local government if they can get it. If we start this in the beginning of 2022, I don't know where this ends. I have a question for Lindsay, and I want to clarify one thing, if Lindsay's available still. I'm going to make a statement, and you're welcome to validate my comment. There's a discussion between ending balances versus budget authority. Budget authority in a contingency fund is record-level low. We're not talking about using contingency funds for this proposal today. We're talking about using Economic Development Fund, which there's $140,000. That's budget authority. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Okay. So is our ending balance right now in 2021 low? Or is it high compared to our historic numbers, going back numbers of years? Are we a little higher than usual or are we lower than usual?
We are higher than usual, but we are not at historic highs.
Okay, maybe not historic. Can you spitball a number for me? What's our ending balance going to be the end of 2021 roughly?
I wish I had my monthly financial report with me. You will receive that today, probably, if I recall correctly, around $95 to $99 million in the general fund.
Typically, in years past, can you recall numbers that we've had in the past, what our ending balance was, let's say, last year or the year before?
Typically, they have been closer to $90 million. Last year's balance was actually higher because we had the transfers related to cares for reimbursement of certain expenses, and we've drawn that down this year, and we expect to draw it down in future years.
So what I'm going to say is, this is about, this is not about the budget performance overall, or about the ending balance for 2021. The concern that's been discussed today is in the contingency fund, which is low. And I understand it's low, but this is, I'm not arguing, we take money out of contingency fund. I'm talking about money that comes out of the Economic Development Fund, which there's sufficient budget authority and budget performance overall to support that, I believe. I don't know that pushing this off necessarily helps anything. If we're going to spend the money now or later, it doesn't really matter if it's now or later, it's come out of the budget one way or the other. But in terms of precedent, I think to do it at the very last meeting of the year is something we, we've done this in the past. To do it out of the beginning of the year, in my opinion, is changing the way we do this. I'm very concerned about that going forward.
I think the only thing I would say is that zoo spending, that $2 million, was actually approved in a January session. And so I do think we actually have maybe some precedent. So I'm sorry to correct, but I just, I want to be sure I'm right on the record.
And that was coming, that did come out of contingency?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And that first year was 2019?
Yes, sir.
But the two years after that were budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm mostly right, and I'm off a little bit.
Yes, you're mostly right.
Thank you. I do think it matters to understand the difference between budget authority and budget performance or budget ending balance. I think they're different things.
Yes, understood.
To the concerns of my colleagues and to changing this motion to how it's paid out, is there any advantage that you can think of about whether we do it in '21 or '22 based on my proposal today?
I think if the commission wanted to approve it today to be paid out of the 2022 budget, the payment could still get made, and we would not have the budgetary concerns that we do. But I also understand your perspective of wanting to make sure that it's kept as year-end type funding.
What is your budgetary concern regarding my proposal today, taking this out of 2021 Economic Development? What's your concern on that specifically?
I think it's more about what those unanticipated bills are that we don't know that are coming. As Brent had shared, we have the 2.1 million that's coming out of contingency. We may, so we are spending on average about $800,000 a month on temporary employment services. There are other costs over and above that related to COVID that come in. And so my fear is that we may potentially be in a position where we do have to go to other departmental budgets. Typically, because economic development is under the finance umbrella, that would be one of the first places that we would go to find that budget so that we didn't have to go out to departments operating budgets. But certainly, we can do that if this is the policy will of the commission.
So to be clear, it's not an Economic Development bill that's coming due that we are aware of. You're saying, because there's money sitting there, you transfer that money out of Economic Development to something else that might need that money?
Correct.
That's the concern?
Correct.
Are there other places that you might be able to get money besides Economic Development Fund?
Well, I think, as we talked about, there are some departments that have some significant salary savings due to unfortunate levels of turnover. And so we would be forced to go probably to those departments and take from there. But it would be past the point when they had bills coming due related to personnel. And so it would impact how their revised budget looks. But as long as we do a good job of explaining that to you in future years, that would be our strategy.
All right. Well, if this motion fails, I'll have to remake my other motion again, but I'm going to have to vote against it for now because, you know, for the reasons I've already stated. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
I just have one more question. If we do either, Brent or Lindsay, if we do half now and half in '22, when is that '22 payment going to be ready for them?
We, assuming we got an invoice, the book's open, I believe, on January 10th or 11th, whatever that first Monday is.
We're not asking to wait a full year. We're just to the next, okay. And I do think it's important, as if we're talking about precedent-setting, I mean, the last 11 times we've given money, only three have been in December. I see June, October, January, February, July, October, June, and November. So I don't think it's necessarily setting a new precedence because just historically, three out of 11 have been at the end of the year. So I don't see why this would be hurtful to, for you guys, because, I mean, it's not like we're asking to wait another year, but we're just asking that we help with the year-end cycle with finance. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for letting me ask just a couple of questions, and then we'll bring this to a vote. Victor, just a quick question, a couple of questions, along with the kudos of thanks that has already been expressed, I echo all of the comments and to save time. Your coverage is statewide or 80 counties or, do you know about?
Interesting question, but we cover, our focus is mainly central Kansas. But because we're carried on satellite and on YouTube TV and other sources, we are statewide. Because, and we measure this because we have a few membership contributions from just about every state except the ones toward Topeka.
Okay.
The east, I guess you call them the northeastern states.
Okay. So to follow up briefly on Commissioner Dennis's question about City of Wichita, is your fundraising efforts, does it extend beyond Sedgwick County? Or is it, is this request just to us and then...
No, we are, we're trying to...
To other county, other government agencies, not just individuals?
Exactly.
Yes, is the answer yes?
Yes. We have, we get support from other cities and other counties.
Not, I'm not talking about fees. I'm just talking about fundraising.
No fees, fundraising.
Okay.
Including Alstead and places like that.
All right. And I don't, I'm not privy to, and I don't know if, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is your financials available? Can you provide all the other entities that, government entities that donate to your...
It's against the law for us to provide individual contributions or contributors' lists to anyone.
Okay. So, but you are talking to all the other counties and cities, asking for donations, but you can't tell us if anybody approves or, but everybody will know that Sedgwick County, if we approve this?
Well, you're on television.
I get it, I get it. That's why I'm asking. I agree. We try to be transparent up here. There's a word. Okay. So the other question on the, I've only got four questions, but the other question was on the consent agenda, your increased fees. It was stated that, I think Commissioner Howell stated, it was a small increase. I think the increase is about 11%. Is that correct?
That's about correct.
Okay. So I don't know what the definition of small and large is, but...
Well, but that's a service, that's a totally different ballgame.
I agree. So your fees for service are going up 11% to the county, churches?
In our general underwriting period, when we, we've increased our asks for, to corporations and foundations as much as we can to help us with the operational cost. Because our budget is about 3.3 million, and we have to raise 73% of that budget.
Okay. No, I understand, I understand.
And as I said, PBS has increased its cost to us. I mean, we had no choice in that matter.
Okay. Lastly, based on a lot of the examples that have been given, in this last couple of months, I personally have received a number, a number of calls from executive directors, even board members and chairs of the boards requesting, how do I get, how does our operate, how's our nonprofit, this is all on the nonprofit, how's our nonprofit get on the list to receive donated monies from Sedgwick County? I have been successfully able to, if it's a number that they can justify and an amount they can justify under the rules of ARPA, to, I've instructed, requested that they please go to the ARPA Committee and website. I don't advocate one way or another for or against because I can't, but it is an availability for them to go to ARPA. Some of them say what kind of has been said here, well, this nonprofit got this and this nonprofit got that. And as a result of that, we have discussed, and I've discussed for next year's process, that we do a, you know, almost a call for projects for all the nonprofits, because there are some really good ones that are requesting money. And if we're going to get into the donation to nonprofits that we do not have board members serving on or not part of county functions, that we find out how big that bucket is and we include it as a budgetary item, if it's the will of the commission, for a budgetary item to have X amount assigned for, to qualify under nonprofit requests for either specific or general use by the nonprofit. Every one of these nonprofit requests we've had recently, they come to us, and it is the most important item, which I totally understand because your mission and your leadership... your mission and your leadership, yours is the most important to you. And the community in whole is how it's always presented, even one, one recent request, it was the term, it's a matter of life or death. So I don't know if life or death decision is more important than all the community services you do with that. But that's the pressure that this commission is under. So I would, I would really be more honored to support your request if it came in through a process that I just explained under the nonprofit bucket of potential considerations. And then all the commissioners would, would have to do their own soul searching, how big, how big does that bucket need to be and who, who can contribute or who do we award it to? So with that, I, I don't know the sense of urgency that you have to have it now, your building's being built. I am supportive of what you want to do and how you want to do it, but I would sure be more comfortable if you would apply through the process I've just discussed that's coming out in the budget process. And I'd be more comfortable if I had a sense of how much other support you get to all the, all the other counties and government agencies outside just fees, but, but regular monetary donations that, that I could compare to. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully not support this motion based on, on that. But I obviously enjoy everything that you do.
Mr. Chairman, in the, in view of the lack of a procedure that hasn't been put in place.
Correct.
We're talking about the future, that you're talking about the future and the process. But the future of PBS cancers is now. So please keep that in mind.
I understand. And the future of my phone ringing with all the other nonprofits that have been calling me the last 60 days would be, I would be inconsistent saying to them, look, I want you to please try to go through a process. And then they say, well, why is, why is this request being done? And I'd have to repeat all the positives that we impact. So I'm in, I'm in a tough spot personally. So with that, I respectfully will, will not be supportive of this motion. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
No. Motion carries. That was the substitute motion from Commissioner Lopez. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for the healthy discussion and all the information. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on December 9th, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on December 9th results in six items that we're bringing to you this morning. The first item is the 2022 Recommended Insurance Renewals for Risk Management. This recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed, and this is for an estimated total cost of $419,247.2. Item number two is Telematics for Public Works Fleet Vehicles, course for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Sam Serra Incorporated based on the Sourcewell Contract, and that number is 020-221-SAM. It's in the amount of $208,379. And this will also establish a contract period of 36 months, beginning upon shipment of hardware and accessories from that company. Item number three is Thermal Electron Maintenance and Support Plan and Service Contract for Regional Forensic Science Center. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Thermal Electron North America LLC, and it is for a three-year total cost of $51,972. Item number four is the SAP Success Factors, Performance, and Goals for the Enterprise Resource Planning, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from HR Focal Point LLC, and it's for a five-year total cost of $338,100. Item number five is another SAP. The success factors is the Learning Management System for Enterprise Resource Planning. This recommendation is to accept the quote from HR Focal Point LLC, and this five-year total is for $258,250. Our final item, item number six, is the SAP Arriba Cloud Services for Enterprise Resource Planning, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Phoenix Business Incorporated, doing business as Phoenix Business Consulting, for a five-year total of $341,500. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the Board of Bids? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts as presented. Motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items J through Q on this morning's agenda.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, I would like to pull item L for further clarification. So we'll do consent items J through Q, with the exception of item L.
Okay.
There's a motion in a second. Sorry about that, Commissioner Howell. I apologize.
I have a question on regarding item J. We can, I can ask it quickly, or we can just pull that off and do that separately? Your choice, Chairman.
I don't care. We can pull item J as well.
Okay, thank you.
So consent items J through Q, with the exception of J and L. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioner Howell, item J?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, I want to say thank you to this donation from the VFW for our EMS organization. This is the second donation that they have made, and I think it's wonderful that they've chosen to bless the EMS organization. My question is, I guess, for management, how is this money going to be provided to EMS? Is this just going to go into the budget, or is this going to be, you know, there's an EMS Advisory Group, I guess. I'd like to have them have some options to figure out how best to use this money. Can you please explain?
Yes, sir. So Lindsey Povis, so you're CFO, EMS does have a, excuse me, a separate grant fund that has been established. And so with this request, the funding would be, it would be deposited there and budget authority established so that EMS could access those funds at the department level.
So who in the organization is going to be making decisions regarding the, you know, the uses of these, these funds?
Good morning, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Generally speaking, the department director is the one, he and his leadership team are the ones who make budget decisions regarding the spending of money. Now, they haven't, you mentioned the Employee Advisory Committee. Obviously, they have conversations with them about various operational and administrative issues. But generally, they, the budget is managed by the director. The director is the budget manager for the department.
For item J, I absolutely want to say we would be glad to accept this money and, and send a note of thanks to the organization for providing this. But second to that, I wanted to advocate, if you will, for a process whereby the EMS Advisory Group or Advisory Committee or whatever would have some additional discretion, I guess, regarding how this money is spent to enhance some of the things that they need as an organization. Let me give you one example. I have had some of those folks reach out to me and say that the furniture in their posts is not usable. And I, I, I think that the, the posts need to have some TLC. Some of the posts are brand new and have, have great equipment and great furniture, for example. Some of the posts are very tired and need a lot of help. And I've talked with Tanya Cole about this in the past, you know, about getting something on the CIP to address the condition of some of these older posts. But with regards to this money, it would be a very good amount of money for them to buy some furniture, for example, for, say, for these posts, if that's what they wanted to do. I would like to give them some latitude to do that. So I know they have great needs. I would like to see them, as a group, access these funds and be able to use it for things they think are important, if possible. Other things that, you know, administratively that we should be providing, if, if we need to provide things through the budget process, that's something I would like to do through the budget process. But this is extra on top of that. I want to make sure these folks have access to these funds. So that's my comment. I absolutely would agree with, of course, accepting this donation. So Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept a donation from, from the VFW for the amount of $1,250 and send a note of thanks.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other questions on item J or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. So item L, I just want a clarification, a couple of items. So looking at the contract, which is a number of pages, 12 pages, small print, can you, Tom or Lindsey, so I see in the cover page, the financial considerations, I just want to confirm, through the number 11% out there, this, this new contract is with an 11% increase?
That's my understanding, Chairman, yes.
Okay. And do you know how much does a county pay KPTS annually today, going into?
Stand by this one second, Chairman.
Good morning, Chairman. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I think your question was, how much are we paying today for KPTS services? So in 2020, our amount that we paid annually was $88,972. The year before that, in 2019, we paid $60,203. So it, it just varies every year how much we pay based on the number of meetings we have.
Okay. So that's '20 and '19, so we don't really have the '21 number yet?
In 2021, for this year, it looks like we're, we're at $56,899 so far for this year.
Okay. Thank you for that. So the, and then the, so the 11% increase is basically on this next paragraph, the per hour increase?
Correct. That's the per hour for your closed captioning and then for your meeting hours.
Right. And then if we go over two hours, we get a increase, I mean, it's pro-rated to, to continue on per hour?
Per quarter hour, yes.
Per quarter hour?
That's how they bill us. It's, it's a minimum of two hours per meeting, and then they charge us per quarter hour, depending on how long we go per meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, clarify also for the record, because I'm sure some of the public was probably wondering, what does the county pay today? So, thank you very much. Any other questions about item J or item L? Any other comments? Being none, I make a motion, we approve item L. There's a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Legislative issues. Mr. Papoun, are there any at this point?
No, we don't have any legislative issues at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, does anybody have anything in their committees that they want to report? And I don't see any. Hopefully, some of us have enjoyed some of the committee that we represent holiday spirit hours a few times. We do have something, do we want to, well, next item, under other, we don't have an executive session, but could we recess from the county commission meeting and we'll open the, the Fire District meeting? So we will recess from the regular Board of County Commission meeting, and we'll call to order the board governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. First item, please.
Public agenda.
We did not have any items on the public agenda under the Fire District One, so we'll move to the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of November 3rd, 2021.
Commissioners, you've had a copy of the minutes from November 3rd. If it's okay with you, I'd like to combine A and B, which is the minutes of November 3rd and November 10th Fire District Meeting, for approval. There's a motion in a second for approval. Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item C, Wyandotte Nation Cross Winds Casino Fire Service Agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good to see you again.
Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. This is Part Two of the service and funding agreement with the Wyandotte Nation. And again, as spoken before, the Wyandotte Nation and Commissioners Cruz and Meitzner negotiated with Chief Billy Friend, Ms. Kelly Carpino, the CEO of the Wyandotte Tribe of Oklahoma, that's the Economic Development Corporation for the tribe, and with Kevin Lean, who is the General Manager at Cross Winds Casino. And through about three different meetings and conversations about compensation for services, the Wyandotte Nation, again, proposed and agreed to provide funding the second half. There was $125,000 total. The portion for the Fire District, based on approximate mill levy equivalent, is $47,314 for an initial three-year term, beginning March 1st, 2021, ending April 30th, 2024. So by contract, once this is ratified, within approximately 30 days of ratification and, and return of this contract to the nation, they would issue the first check for 2021, and then approximately March 1st of each year thereafter, we would receive that $125,000 payment split between county and Fire District. So with that, the recommendation, again, is to approve the agreement and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Rusty. We kind of discussed this in the last part of the general meeting, so I don't have any other questions. I'll make a motion to approve. Motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items D and E on the Fire Agenda.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented by the, there's a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay. Any other business at the Fire District? I don't see any, so we will adjourn the Fire District, and we'll return from recess to the Board of County Commission Meeting. We're at the next item.
Other.
We're at the next item of other. Does anybody have any items under the other category? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the last regular meeting of this year, so I wanted just to say thank you for, or thank you to our staff for another great year. As we get into December, our attentions turn to family and holiday and hopefully some time to get refreshed. And so I just want to say, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and enjoy some time away from the regular grind at work. It's been a tough year, and it's time for us, I think, to get our mental state back to where it needs to be and take some time for ourselves and for our families. So please have a Merry Christmas. For me personally, I do plan to have a coffee this coming Friday, the 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. It's open to anyone that wants to chat about anything on county business. Again, that's 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby this Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say Merry Christmas to all, and I appreciate the chance to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I have a, kind of an item, a small item, has been brought to our attention, we ought to probably address, is that we're in the middle of, of course, the pandemic is still kind of around and increased up and down. But what I'm getting at, there's a, about a month ago, we supported, the community supported a big effort to assure continued testing by the, community testing in whole, meaning the whole community, for the MDL lab down at Wichita State. My, my experience and feedback has been, has been incredibly successful. It's fast, it's efficient, they turn around within the day. Transportation down there and back has been fantastic. And so there's a little bit of dialogue going on. fantastic, and so there's a little bit of dialogue going on. We've received a letter from the governor's office about the continuation of such, and we were under the understanding originally that funding for this testing would be ongoing through the end of March, which would get us close to the end of the school year. Then we've had some conflicting dialogue between our health department verbally and KDHE. We've had a little bit of discussion and some documents, a little bit back and forth. And so I just want to let the public and remind in my conversations that, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but today at the East Harry office, at their East Harry testing site, we do anywhere from 125 to 175 tests a day. Those are walk-in at the mall.
That's correct, that's what we've averaged for the last couple of weeks.
And we take those tests and run them to the MDL lab?
That's correct.
Okay, and I do understand from Wichita State that the Metroplex up there at 29th and Oliver, they are running efficiently about 200 to 300 a day, something like that.
That's our understanding as well, yes.
That's what they say. And then if you felt symptomatic down at the MDL lab at Oliver, you can walk in and do a, again, this saliva testing or the other test too, but anyway, they do about 150 a day. So if you add these numbers up, there's about 500 tests a day going on in our community of people that are somewhat feel symptomatic or feel a reason, maybe they were, I went and got tested last week because on our floor here, we had a few cases, and just, so those are what I think we're categorizing as people that are just wanting to get tested. But then MDL labs, that's 500, so then the MDL lab also does over 1,000 tests right now that are random testing, meaning schools may have a policy of once a week on some care homes and businesses, and so some of these are doing what I'd call random testing, is that a good term? Just so they can continue their operations in a safe environment and kind of stay ahead of the game. Is that correct?
Yes, some refer to surveillance testing, but yeah, it's randomized testing to make sure that the disease isn't spreading.
All right, and so let's call it, add these up, 1,500 to 2,000 tests a day going on today currently down on South Oliver at the MDL, very efficiently, and some that are even outside Sedgwick County, at the neighboring region. And I think their capacity, what did they tell us the capacity was down there, 7,000, 6,000, 7,000?
They can run a large number, 6,000, 7,000 a day, I think is pretty reasonable for them.
Right, and the beauty is because they've incorporated some technology and some, thanks to our manufacturing system, they can, they've implemented manufacturing processes that help do this quicker. So my summary is that I think we're doing everything we're doing responsibly and efficiently, and we're trying to, you're working with KDHE, and I don't really have a, I think we need to find out, what is the reason why we would upset this apple cart if it's working efficiently and cost-wise between, you know, and right now KDHE's paying it, Spark may have some money for testing, we obviously have money, and so, anyway, Tim, I would appreciate any comments. Commissioner Dennis has a question.
The directive that we've received is that we should no longer, that KDHE will no longer pay MDL for samples that we would take to the MDL. And so we have come up with a contingency plan that would allow us to use some local lab resources and then use the KDHE lab in Topeka. The challenge becomes that the community's expectations have adapted to the MDL turnaround time, as you mentioned, four to six to eight hours is very typical. Any solution that we put together would extend that time period to get results back, anywhere from 12 to 24 hours for the ones that we can process locally and potentially up to 48 hours on those that need to be processed in Topeka. So that's one of the challenges that we face as a community, is that the quick response time on test results that we've become accustomed to, we wouldn't have available any longer.
Right, thanks for helping clarify, and so efficiency and obviously cost, whatever. Anyway, okay, Commissioner Dennis, I know you were, we were in a meeting with me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we go back in time a little bit, if we recall, we got notice from the state of Kansas that they were going to stop paying for the services, and so the commission voted 5-0, as I recall, to send the letter off to the governor and KDHE and to our legislators saying that this is not acceptable. You've got $1.5 billion up there from ARPA funds, and we need to continue this service. In addition, we have some documents that I've got in front of me, it's like five pages long, front and back, of all of the different businesses that are using the WSU MDL lab in order to be able to keep their businesses open. So we got kind of verbal assurance from Will Lawrence, the chief of staff for Governor Kelly, that, hey, no problem, we're going to continue doing this. And verbal assurances are good up to a point, but then suddenly on December 8, I would get a letter from Will Lawrence, and it says, hey, per the November 30 work order, all testing, testing in above-defined facilities cannot be reimbursed by KDHE for tests collected after December 1. So that, we're getting mixed messages. Then we get a letter also dated December 8 from Myron Gonzalez, the director of the laboratory systems, and puts all kinds of new requirements and new restrictions on being able to use the MDL. One of them, which is really concerning to me, is the community testing partner sites, they'll only offer from this point forward antigen tests. So if you go to one of those sites and you're getting ready to get on an airplane to fly, yeah, you can be tested negative with that antigen test, and when you walk up with your boarding pass and they say, what kind of test did you get? You say antigen, they're going to say, you're not flying today because you have to have a PCR test in order to be able to fly. So we're getting mixed messages from the state of Kansas on what they're going to reimburse, and that's what concerns me, is that they tell us one thing, and as a matter of fact, from the feedback I've gotten just today, Zander Schlapp has talked again to Will Lawrence, and he assures us that we're going to continue forward. But again, we're getting verbal direction one place and we're getting written direction another place, and which is going to take precedence. Well, obviously, the written direction is going to take precedence, we're not going to be able to go back and try and submit a work orders, WSU's not going to ask for this. The WSU MDL, we put $4 million of funding ourselves into that facility, and WSU put another $4 million, so we've got $8 million locally invested in the MDL lab, and our community is relying on the MDL lab here to be able to continue to provide testing. And what does it do for us? We can turn around tests in four hours. So they pull it all out and decide that they want us to send it to someplace in Ohio or want us to send it to Topeka to be tested. Now we've got transportation time, we've got testing time, we've lost everything that we've gained. We're back to where we were when we first went into this pandemic, where we were waiting a week sometimes in order to be able to get results from a test. Now we can get it in four hours. WSU is a local asset for this entire region, and our job is to support that local asset that we've got. We've invested too much in it to not continue to test it. So I am very concerned of the mixed messages we're getting from the governor's office, from KDHE, as a result of what we need for testing. So I don't know if we need to go back and send another letter. Maybe things are being worked out and we're going to get another letter. From what I got today from Andy Schlapp, it sounds like maybe it worked out. But what my concern is, is today is the last meeting. If we decide that we want to use some ARPA funding in order to be able to do this ourselves, by the rules of ARPA funding, we're going to have to go out and do an RFP, we're going to have to go through the selection process, and if they cut out funding for this right now, like they say on one December, wow, that's already passed. How in the heck are we going to be able to start funding this if we decide that we're going to do it ourselves because of the rules that are involved? So again, today is our last time that we want to meet unless we have to call a special meeting. So I think at this point, we need to be ready to have the commission sign out another letter back to the governor, the KDHE, to our legislators, and say that what's happening in Topeka is not acceptable. Now, maybe we won't need that letter, but, because I'm hoping that we get something updated since December 8. But if we don't get it, we're going to be between a rock and a hard place because we can't contract in time to be able to move forward. WSU is out there going to be spending money that, in the hopes that the state of Kansas has the ability to start paying this. So I don't know, I'm going to have to ask the chairman if he thinks it's a good idea that we give him authority to sign something out. If we don't get a positive response, I don't want to vote on something today because the feedback I'm getting may be that got worked out. But if it didn't get worked out, and we keep getting verbal assurances that say one thing and written things that say a different thing, we're going to have to go back again to the governor, to KDHE, and to our legislators and say that this is not acceptable. So I'm waiting guidance. I'm ready to make a motion that we allow the chairman to sign out a letter back to the folks in Topeka as a contingency, so I await your decision.
Well, my thought would have been, we just, I'm really close to this challenge, and I continue to monitor, and I think we could, if it's all right with you, just kind of reiterate a letter that we already have on file, so that would be consistent. I wouldn't be changing much other than the support that we've already got on record, and I just try to keep, through Tim and through the manager, just keep you updated if something changes in a positive or negative way. If it goes crossways, I think we'll resend that letter with a sense of urgency, and if we get positive news, we get positive news for Christmas. So, that's my feeling, so, okay?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion then, that as a contingency, that we allow the chairman to sign out a letter back to the governor, to the KDHE, and to our legislative partners here in the South Central District, that reiterates our concern about the possibility of losing the ability to have the state of Kansas funding the WSU MDL.
Motion in a second, and that's if needed. If needed, right, okay. Motion in a second. This is kind of an off-agenda item, but is that all right, under the other, we're kind of?
Yeah, I mean, it's during a meeting, and Commissioner made a motion in seconds.
Under the other, okay, all right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, and under other, changing the mood, Commissioner Howell sent a great message for Merry Christmas, and I'm sorry I.
I forgot about the discussion on testing, so I wish, I should have waited, but.
Well, I know, but so, obviously, I wish everybody the same. Merry Christmas to the staff and your families and friends, and anybody have any other Christmas wishes or others? Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that and just tell everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, but also, you know, this is the end of my first year, and so I really appreciate everybody who's taken the time to kind of walk me through a lot of these processes. There's a lot to learn this first year, my fellow commissioners, staff, management. I really appreciate you and everybody that works for the county. I mean, I hope you guys know how much you're valued, and we appreciate everything you do day in and day out, and we're obviously facing some challenges, but we're going to do our best to get through this, so thank you guys so much.
Good comments. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. Well, at the end of this year, I am always appreciative of our staff, and I thank each and every one of them for what they do to support our community. Most of the jobs that we have in, as commissioners, is to support our citizens, and the way we do that is through our staff, and I want to thank them very much and wish them a very Merry Christmas. I want to thank each and every one of the commissioners for their diligence throughout the year, and I want to finally just wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Ditto.
Let it be on record, that is the fastest speech we've ever had from Commissioner Cruz.
She's trying to send a new.
She's trying to make sure we're not paying that extra 15 minutes an hour. Okay, all right, anyway, thank you, everybody. Happy New Year, and hope that, I'm wishful that we do not have to have a special meeting, but we've had them in the past, but I don't anticipate any, hopefully, and if so, then we will blame it on Lindsey Povis for making us have a meeting. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. The meeting will be adjourned.